Good evening, everyone. I have seven o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order and ask the court to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
And Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. So this evening we have Mr. Mark Posson to lead us in prayer, if I said his name right.
You did. Thank you.
I'm always afraid I'm gonna mess it up.
All right, let's go to prayer. Father, we're thankful for spring, Father, and just the beauty that it brings, Father, with just the newness. And Father, we pray that you would just bless us with just the newness of the blossoming of the trees. And Father, we're thankful as we see the green of the grass turning and just the newness that's coming back into life again. Father, it's just a great reminder of this special week that we, many are celebrating this week in Easter. And the new life that you provide, Father, we thank you, and many are pausing to remember that new life this week. Father, we're thankful for the mayor. We're thankful for these city council members. Father, we're thankful for the city manager and staff for their service to this community, making this community a better place. Father, for the discussions that take place, for the decisions that are made, we just pray that you would just grant your wisdom and discernment. And we just thank you for all that you provide. Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the American flag. This evening we have a proclamation to read. And I'll do that. So this is a proclamation for Arbor Day 2023, so to the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewables resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, I, Jim Benage, Mayor, do hereby proclaim April 29th as Arbor Day in the city of Bel Air. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote well-being of this and future generations. Move on to determine agenda additions. Are there any agenda additions to be made? Here now, move on to consent agenda. So item seven, it contains only the minutes of the March 21st, 2023 regular city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Mr. Mayor, there's a slight correction needed in item six E.
Six E of this consent agenda?
Yes, downward says motion. Looks like a word got left out. It says council member Welch to approve the consent agenda. I think we need the word moved in there.
I'm not, I'm not seeing that on the agenda. I have here, motion to approve, table deny the consent agenda as listed, amended, and authorize the mayor to sign.
You got a different copy than I do.
I just, just.
I mean, the minutes themselves, not the.
Oh, you're looking at minutes. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's what we're talking about, isn't it?
Which item?
Item six E. Now, there's a word moving, missing.
Okay, the word is that you moved, council member Welch moved to approve the consent agenda. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the only note thing I know that needs to be amended.
Okay, so noted. Okay, all right. Thank you for that correction.
We need a different motion.
Yeah, as amended.
As amended.
Second as amended.
A motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, oh, pose same. Same sign. Here now, a vote carries five to zero. Item eight is appropriation ordinance. This reporting period includes one payroll period. Kansas paving receiving first payment of $729,176.93 for pavement or curbing repairs and other project expenses, including $61,993 to McCullough and $42,214 to Garber. I'll entertain a motion to approve the appropriations ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
I'll make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance number 23-06.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. David and second by Mr. Dean. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on, item nine is city requested appearances. So we have three tonight. So I'll start with, first will be Rebecca Armstrong, chairperson of the Bel Air Tree Board, to announce Bel Air Arbor Day celebration. Ms. Armstrong.
Thank you, Mayor and council people. My name is Rebecca Armstrong, 4306 North Rushwood, Bel Air, and I am part of the Tree Board. On April 29th, we will be celebrating trees. The National Arbor Society began Tree City USA in 1976 to promote and care, promote the care and planting of urban trees. Bel Air will be celebrating our 27th year with the designation of Tree City USA, along with 3,600 other cities. As you know, and Mayor Benage talked about, trees are essential for clean air and water, cooling shade, windbreaks, and beauty. The presence of well-established trees add value to properties and to a community. Our trees are precious. The older, the more valuable. Saving and caring for them as stewards is our role, an endeavor for all of us to take seriously. Doug Talami writes about oaks, saying that oaks provide more sanctuary for native life than all other native trees in North America. Their functions and values are beyond what we know. The Tree Board is an essential part of being a tree city. We are tasked to help maintain the tree canopy and promote the planting and care of trees in Bel Air. Our board recently underwent some changes in leadership. Gary Northwall has been part of the Tree Board for over 15 years. He took over Guy McDonald when Guy became a council member, and Gary has been our leader since. We are all thankful for his steadfast and dedicated leadership all of these years and consider him instrumental in maintaining Bel Air's Tree City USA status. We all thank him for his service and are sure he will join us in this appreciation. Emily Ryder is now our secretary, Jesse Miller is our vice chairperson, and I, the new chairperson. We would like you to join us on April 29th, Saturday at 11:00 a.m. at the Central Park Playground to plant a tree and commemorate Arbor Day. All are welcome. In addition, I cordially request that Mayor Benage did as he did tonight, read the proclamation. So I thank you for this time, and I am so glad that we speak as one, all making trees number one priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Pat Herman from Garber to give us an update on the Woodlawn construction progress. Mr. Herman.
I'm gonna adjust it. It helps.
Mr. Mayor, as always, we start out with a safety statement for the Woodlawn update. And this is the springtime.
It helps if you turn it on. This is the springtime edition, so springtime oftentimes comes thunderstorms, tornadoes. So us in the construction industry, we need to be vigilant about watching out for ourselves and other people around us. So we need to have a good plan. If a thunderstorm comes around, we need to have a good exit strategy. Oftentimes, we'll use a muster area just in case we need to leave quickly and come back. And yeah, yeah, so just briefly need to be careful out there, so. So we still use public involvement on the project. It's an incredible tool. It helps us get out to the public and the residents and the business owners. And we can get, when they have concerns, we can come back to them in a relatively quick timeframe. Also, the website for the city of Bel Air works very well as well. Okay. So little bit of a change here. So we're at 69% complete. We've charged 271 working days and, and so the contractor has requested an additional 57 days added on to the project. So this is with regards to the utility work that is through the railroad, okay? So the, it is in KDOT's hands for signatures. KDOT has accepted the terms, but it hasn't fully executed yet, so. So now we'll be seeing contracted days at 390 days. Current activities, we have storm sewer drains and boxes along the west half of Woodlawn. So we are seeing some utility conflicts, a few of them that we've seen in the recent weeks here. And the contractor in the city of Bel Air and KDOT are working together. The good news is that oftentimes the contractor is finding these things early and good, good decisions can be made, you know, rather than reacting quickly. So, and on the main line, so you guys have seen, I'm sure on Woodlawn, the subgrade and aggregate base and curb and gutter placement on the west half. Here we go, 45th Street. I think we're all happy to see that one open up. So we're opening all, all directions. That's a milestone for this project. So we, we were all incredibly thrilled and it opened up a little bit earlier than we expected to, so that was really good. This is Woodlawn looking south from 45th Street. So you can see we've got aggregate base down and curb and gutter here. And they're installing storm sewer boxes. And this is a picture of some of the utility conflicts that we've seen on the project. So they're doing a down and under with the 18-inch water main here. This, this allows the water line to kind of route underneath a storm sewer to get, get, get the water line out of the way. There we go. So we're still in two E and we're gonna, as far as the phasing goes, we're gonna continue in two E until the utility work is done through the utility and the paving work is done through the railroad crossing. But the good news is, is that the contractor is actually completing or working on some of the work for Phase Three at the same time. So we're getting production done there, and I'm sure you all have seen quite a bit of production here on the project. So that's working out really good. Let me go back one. It's moving slow. Okay. So looks like asphalt on the west side of, or the west half of Woodlawn is gonna be about two to three weeks. It could happen as soon as next week, but, but I would, I would say a safe bet would be two to three weeks here. And they're gonna continue working on subgrade base pavement for the entrances and the installation of storm sewer items south of the railroad tracks. Additional activities, so the railroad right-of-way permit, that's gonna, that work is gonna start around mid to late April and last through the month of July there. Excuse me. So traffic at the railroad is, it's actually, it's gonna look much like the railroad closure that we had a few weeks ago. And so we're gonna have north and southbound traffic from 37th to 39th Street. And then we'll have also north and southbound traffic from the vet clinic all the way up to 45th Street. There will be no through traffic at, at the railroad during this timeframe. So as you can see, we're gonna have, it's, not a whole lot is gonna change here from what we see right now on Woodlawn. Now that we have 45th Street open, we're gonna have regular traffic through the intersection, north and southbound traffic. I know it's kind of hard to see the arrows there, but the, the traffic is gonna be on the east half. And the highlighted area that's gonna be our construction zone, as you can see, once again, north and southbound traffic north and south of the railroad tracks. So once again, looks like it's gonna be mid to late April through the month of July. And it's, the, the traffic control is gonna be very similar to the, to the closure that we had at that, at that railroad intersection by the railroad a few weeks ago. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. So I did have just a comment or question. I noticed the speed limit southbound on Woodlawn north of 45th is not posted as 30 as posted as 40. And I don't know if that should be 30 or should be 40, but it might be something you want to look into, okay? Because I know south of 45th, it is 30, so.
Right, right. We'll look into it, yeah.
And the other thing, and I'd just appreciate if you'd take a look at it, I'm not saying it's bad, but you might look at the joining of the curbs to the inlets. They look rough, but I've not gone down and looked at them. I'm just driving past and it just like, looks like just rough workmanship, so.
Okay, for the curb and gutter or?
Where the curb meets the inlets.
Oh, okay.
Along the, along the whole route.
Okay.
Just looks rough.
Like it's, like it's thick or like?
Maybe a workmanship issue. I don't know that it is. I'm not saying it is.
Sure.
Because I'm not an expert and I haven't taken on, made a good close look at it.
No, that's fair.
I'm just telling you, it, it just looks odd to me.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay.
So that's the only questions I had.
I've got two different questions. When do you think you'll get the final lay on the asphalt at 45th going east, west, and north?
That's gonna be at the end of the project. All the, all the final, the final lift, the, that, that's gonna be at the end of the project, so.
Okay, just people are complaining about all those bumps, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I understand. It's, if, if they put the final lift in now, all the, all the construction traffic that's going back and forth, it would beat it up pretty good. So that's, that's why they do that. So unfortunately, it's, it's gonna be a little rough for a little while, but that, that, once the finish goes on there, it'll be nice and smooth.
And the access to the vet clinic, you're gonna get access to the south driveway coming from the north?
There's, well, I'm not exact.
When you close the railroad, because all that, all that pavement there still needs ripped out, I think. So I'm not sure how you're gonna provide access. Can you describe that?
To be honest with you, I'm, I'm not really sure how they're going to do it. All I do know is that they will provide access for all, all residents and business owners. So their, their means and methods of how they're gonna provide that access is, is gonna be up to the contractor.
Because even the north entrances within the area, that still needs to be worked on. And I don't know if it's really an entrance or not. I'm not clear on that. If it's a one-way traffic through there or?
Yeah, I can, I can talk to the contractor for sure and, and see what they plan to do there, but, but they will have access, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I just had two questions. Number one, a resident wanted to know when the signals would go up at 45th and Woodlawn, when you're expecting that? And number two, with these 57 additional working days, when those are all finalized, realistically, are we looking at November and December now for final completion of the project, or what's that estimate now?
The, the estimate that I'm hearing from, that I have from the contractor right now is September, yeah. And I'm sorry, what was your first question?
A resident was curious, when will the traffic lights go up at 45th and Woodlawn?
Do you, Eric, do you remember that part of the city?
As far as the traffic signals at 45th Street, we are, we did experience a utility conflict in the northeast quadrant with a gas line. So we're having some issues having to relocate a signal pole base for that. We do have, we did pour a signal pole base today in the northwest quadrant, and those obviously have cure times for concrete. So I would imagine probably, you know, a month or two at least, if maybe not, maybe longer.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I just wanted to point out that if you add the working days that are now allowed based on the approval from KDOT, that's 119 working days. And if you add that to the reporting date of 2/21, that does put you right at September 1st, but I want to make it. first, but I wanna make it kinda clear that on a working day contract, any days they lose from this point forward, you can kinda start tracking it if you're at home, pay attention. If they're not working because of weather, if they're not working because there's a conflict that you report to us, that September first is probably the best case. It is from what I'm seeing, looking at the days, adding those days, that's the best case.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I'm, 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 I'm a little leery to say exact dates, uh, just, just because of that, so, uh, you'll, you'll hear me say like September, you know? So, because that's the, I mean, it's, it's pretty far out there, so, uh, we can get a lot of weather between now and then.
Another rainy June, so yeah.
But I appreciate the question.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Herman? Well, thank you for the update, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, and then next we have Mr. Ken Lee from Garver to give us an update on Forty-Fifth Street design.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council members. Uh, uh, wanted to just give you, I'm gonna try and get in the habit of doing a monthly update of what we're going on with Forty-Fifth Street, so I didn't do a presentation tonight, but I'll just kind of run through where we are on items and then I'll take questions. But, uh, the first item is, is, uh, we've, we've started talking with our communication team as far as getting prepped for the project website and, uh, I had a meeting with Ann Stevens and Tristan Turhune last week to kind of start setting expectations as far as what to do and we'll continue to work on that. We, we don't expect the website to go live until after the concept is approved, probably in late May, so it'll be June before that website goes up, but we do wanna get some kind of a website going to start getting feedback from, uh, the community and one of our plans as part of that is to have an, one of the pages will be an interactive page with an aerial photo or, well, an aerial map that you can, uh, move around in, drop markers and provide comments. If there's an area that you have a particular concern about, there'll be an opportunity to get feedback from the public on that and we'll go ahead and get that started early as much as anything else, just so we have it fully fleshed out as we get further on into the project. Um, we're, we're still working through our survey on the project that's nearing completion. I, I do have enough control survey that I do have an initial concept laid out and we're in the process of meeting with stakeholders right now to talk about, uh, different issues along the route to kind of refine our, uh, our concept as we go along. Uh, Ann has asked us to evaluate the box capacity of the, uh, uh, box culvert south of Forty-Fifth and Oliver that there's, there's some issues with that and so that's, that report's gonna be due here in a couple of weeks on that. Uh, I'm also starting to do preliminary analysis of the pond that's north of Trib Seven. When we looked at the design, we said that we'd look at that, so before we get involved, get the neighbor involved, we're gonna see if there's enough, we're working on that, that report right now to see if it's gonna be impactful, so we're still working on that part. Um, we're, Ann and I are gonna be meeting with Stucky Middle School next week, uh, not Stucky, uh, sorry, Sunrise Christian Academy next week, uh, to, uh, discuss the coordination of relocating their driveway and the, the crosswalk there. So that meeting has been set up and we've had a preliminary discussion with Jeremy Smith over there at the school to, to talk about what their expectations are and it sounds like our timing for the project is good because they're wanting to do some improvements on the property where we wanna locate the drive, so it's a good time to be having this conversation. Uh, it is important to note that they do have a couple of their, uh, uh, shrubs that are, that spell out sunrise, that's actually out in the street right away and I advise them that, uh, they probably should start thinking about when is a good time to get that moved because it'll be in conflict with our future walk. So, we're, we're starting the process with them and then we met with, uh, Shane Schumacher with USD two-five-nine, he's their facilities manager and property, property management, uh, uh, person with USD two-five-nine. We met onsite, Ann and I did, with him to talk about that connection between Forty-Fifth and Woodlawn that we, or Forty-Fifth and Oliver that we talked about. And the good news is, is they are definitely gonna provide financial support for a sidewalk connection. The exact manner of it is gonna be, uh, under discussion. Uh, he would actually prefer that we connect it further south into the Eagles Landing neighborhood. There's a road that stubs towards the school there right now. That gives a more direct route for the, the kids that live in that area and he would like to continue that sidewalk or connect also a sidewalk across to the adjacent property. So, they're in support of doing the sidewalk along Forty-Fifth as well, just to create more of a cohesive loop system on that, but it, it was an interesting discussion with Shane and, uh, we may end up, uh, working with city staff to do some of that work sooner cause they told us that for every bus, they don't run at sixty thousand dollars a year in savings. So you can imagine that if you can save five years of buses, that's three hundred thousand dollars that they can help contribute towards the project. So, uh, they're definitely interested in, in working on that, uh, project with us and figuring out the best route. The one question is, is safe crossing of, uh, Oliver there, if we, if we put it in, uh, something a little further south, uh, Willow Point goes into the Eagle Lake neighborhood and then, I don't remember the name of the street that goes west into, uh, uh, Eagles Landing, the, the Hawk Signal is what we tri- typically try to use these days for pedestrian-only crossings. They, they don't require as much signal warrants, they're less expensive to operate and install, uh, but they also have some clearance requirements from intersections, you don't install them directly at intersections, so we might have to install that north of forty-four, or north of Willow, uh, between Forty-Fourth and the entry into Eagles Landing. So, we're working on that, taking some looks at that to try and come up with the solution that works for the school district and provides a safe route, but we're, our plan is to still, with our project, is work with them to do some other sidewalks to tie in those neighborhoods in the area. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Well, that sounds really positive, I hope it continues as, as well, so. Any other questions for Mr. Lee?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll just make a comment that, uh, this, I live in that area, I do know that the traffic backs up on Oliver pretty far south and so that may be a factor that I'm sure you'll consider as you look at where to put that crossing. I know, you know, at busy times of the day, the traffic's backed up clear to, uh, Willow Point and sometimes beyond a lot of the time, so.
Yeah.
I know a lot will change with that intersection that may affect that, but it may be difficult to navigate a pedestrian crossing in the middle of a bunch of stopped cars.
Yeah, and that, that's certainly something that we'd need to look at and I, I don't know if you know how the Hawk Signals work, but basically what they do is when somebody approaches, it, you hit a button and it's kind of a triangular shaped signals, they turn red, solid red, and then they give a certain amount of time for pedestrians across and they start flashing red, which means stop and then proceed with caution. So it's one of those things, we will look at it. I think when I checked the distance, where we were looking at crossing was still gonna be about twelve hundred feet south of the intersection and the one thing that would, it's a good comment, what we'd wanna do is, at the time the students would be using that, the most likely time, is, is that gonna be at the peak time of when traffic backs up? Cause I certainly have driven through that intersection at, uh, five o'clock in the afternoon and it, there can be some significant backups there, so it's, it's a good point.
I could just see the cars lined up, you know, blocking the crosswalk and then somebody pushes the button and we're, how are they gonna cross? Cause there's a car parked right in the middle of it.
Yeah, so it, it, there's certainly, uh, something we'll have to be looking at as we consider that, but the school district did indicate that, uh, they're excited about the Forty-Fifth project, but they would like to have a conversation about doing something sooner and if they do that type of work, it'll mostly, most likely be all on their dime if they're doing that work, is my guess and whether or not that will financially work, we're putting together some cost estimates as part of the discussion, so.
Thank you.
If you put that crossing in down south on Oliver, what's the future impact if we wanna do something to Oliver?
At, at Forty-Fifth and Oliver?
No, you said south of Oliver, south of Forty-Fifth, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it would be twelve hundred feet south, it would be clear enough and, and a Hawk System is intermittent, it's not, it's not on any kind of regular cycle.
I'm, I'm, I'm questioning if we, in five years we decide to redo Oliver, will the crossing?
You mean like widening?
Gotcha. Um, well, the one thing we would wanna do is, we'd wanna set the pole bases far enough back to, to work with whatever, whatever improvements we're proposing on Oliver as we go south, we'll wanna work that into it and it, it would be prudent and, uh, even though the school district wants to get it in sooner than later, we'll probably wanna have our traffic information before we do that and I can always work with Mike to, to, to get some preliminary information on that as well. Mike Spade.
And is there a sidewalk from that development west of Oliver that goes over towards the school?
Uh, there's a gap, uh, there's a stub street and the sidewalk stops, there's a little stub street that points towards the school and so there's like a two-hundred-and-fifty foot gap and it's a cross property that's owned by Coke, so part of the process for the school district would be obtaining the right to put the sidewalk across the property that's owned by Coke Industries.
Okay, I haven't been over there and I was just concerned if we were gonna have to try to go through somebody's backyard.
No, it, 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 there's a street pointed that way and it's, it's a natural connection point for, for that sidewalk and it takes it more directly to the entry of the school as well.
We will have a Hawk System on Woodlawn here in a few months.
Yeah, so you'll get to see, see how it works and.
Well, there's one of those right now at the fire station on Woodlawn, isn't there?
Oh, yeah, down, south of Twenty-first Street, yeah, there's one, there's one south of Twenty-first Street right now, I believe, so.
Don't see it often, working, but.
Well, that's the goal, is you only, it only, you should only see it when it's needed and other than that, it's dark, I mean, that's the goal, is for it to not be intrusive, so. Okay, well, thank you for.
Other questions for Mr. Lee? All right, well, thank you very much, we appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Okay. Next we'll move on to citizens' concerns and I have a card from Michael Mitchell. So if you please come to the podium and state your name and address and, uh, you have your three minutes to speak, which is what we do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Michael Mitchell, my home is at five-one-one-seven North Dublin Street. It's a newer development where we live, it's called Deer Run, it's north of Forty-Fifth but south of, uh, Fifty-third and you enter the development by turning, traveling east on Deer Run. Uh, it's a growing development, we now have twelve families occupied in the development and there's, I believe, seven new construction. Uh, and there are, I believe, seven homes along Deer Run as you travel east on Deer Run. Uh, there are some term, termination streets as you turn through, come through there that will be part of later developments, different phases of our development. Uh, when you hit the end of Deer Run, you turn, you, uh, can turn slightly west and then head north on, uh, Rock Springs or, uh, sorry, um, yeah, Rock Springs and that would head, uh, north and terminate at Fifty-third Street, a different development. Um, been asked by several, uh, homeowners that, uh, bring up the idea or talk about the idea of maybe having something to address a speeding problem down, uh, Deer Run, um, it's quite, been quite bad, uh, recently and as more homes come in there, we get more concerns. I, it's, what, what has happened is the Rock Springs development, now people can come and travel down and get on Rock Road where they only before had to go to Fifty-third Street and then go west and down Rock Road. So it's a, just shortcut, which is fine, but they, uh, it's almost a racetrack these days with, uh, the cars going quite, quite fast. We've had, uh, a community, uh, mailbox, that's the one, you know, where these many houses have it. And actually, the worst one was December tenth, somebody was driving so fast they lost control, went up over the curb of a new build house and took out the fire hydrant, which caused a lot of water in the street and they had to shut the water off to get it fixed. Um, we do have pictures of those if you would be interested. Um, and that was at, um, Deer Run and, and, I think it's Lysy is the street and it travels back south, it was that corner. Um, we don't know, speed bumps might be an option, uh, or posted, uh, speed limit, which we have nothing along there, just something maybe so people will kinda slow down and I think maybe they got used to kinda going through there, excuse me, kinda fast because really, houses living there, nobody was there, it's kinda like, well, being built, but, uh, we're growing development now and we'd like to make sure we have some concerns with that speeding addressed if possible. That was all I have, really.
Okay, well, thank you for your.
Appreciate the opportunity.
And, uh, we'll certainly, uh, look at those, see what can be done. I can't promise the results, so we'll try, okay? Thank you. Any other citizen's concerns this evening? We'll move on to, uh, council member reports. Ms. Hamburg, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I attended the CCUA meeting on March twenty-third. It was interesting as usual, um, the number of us were there, um, so I will just mention, um, one of the items was, um, um, there was approval to purchase additional cybersecurity services from ConnectWise that was, um, that was approved, so, thank you.
Good, thank you. Mr. Welch.
I have no report.
Mr. Smith.
I have no report.
Mr. David.
Mr. Mayor, I also attended the CC, CCUA and, and this month we were out of compliance. We've had our, um, inflows out of compliance for, out of, uh, recommended guidelines for a while, but this month we didn't handle them, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dean.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I have a report, uh, a few items, so bear with me. Um, I attended the Kansas Rural Water Association Conference, uh, last week, um, also in attendance was Ann, it was nice seeing her there, as well as a lot, several of our friends at PEC, Burns and McDonald, Garver and other local engineering firms, public works and industry professionals. Uh, it was good to hear updates about the future of water in Kansas. Uh, there was a range of topics, including the bipartisan infrastructure law, uh, additional KDHE, uh, funding for water, wastewater, um, they also attended a, a session that talked all about the state water planning process, which was very interesting and I'm not gonna read all the notes I took on that, but it was very enlightening. And I know Brian Meyer actually serves on one of the, uh, regional advisory committees, I think is what the term is, and it's the Walnut and I'm forgetting the name of the other, other, but he's on one of the five, there's five regions and serves on that, so appreciate your service on that, I know that's an important issue. One of the guest speakers at one of the lunches, uh, over the three days was Tom Stiles, Director, uh, Bureau of Water, KDHE, uh, really appreciated hearing his perspective, he shared perspective, uh, enlightened everybody on his opinions on several things, uh, it was nice to hear his comments specifically on policy and partnering with public and private sectors. Quote, "Sound policy includes physical, biological and social sciences," is what he, he said, so it was really nice to hear, uh, somebody leading one of our agencies that has that take on, uh, setting policy. I think that's an important thing, um, to work with both those public and private partners. Um, also attended Spring Festival, volunteered over the weekend to help that, uh, event out. It was a beautiful, it was a beautiful day and a great turnout. I just wanna thank staff, I know there's a lot of time put into helping promote that event, um, also with Bel Air Rec Center and the Chamber for pulling together the coordination effort. I've been a citizen for, oh, ten, twelve years now and I've always really enjoyed those regular community events, so appreciate everybody's efforts on those. Um, the Bel Air Chamber tomorrow has their monthly lunch, um, in the community room, uh, from eleven-thirty to one. If you are interested to be enlightened on the new K ninety-six expansion project will be, which will be happening over the next several years, um, you're welcome to attend. It's always a, a great, um, opportunity to listen to guest speakers about different topics that concern our citizens and businesses. And then lastly, I will be attending the Federal Issues Forum next Tuesday, Wichita Chambers hosting an event and hosting, uh, guest speaker Senator, uh, Roger Marshall to cover several, uh, pertinent issues, so that's my report, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Move on to Mayor's report, so as we continue through the holy week, I hope all have a blessed, uh, Easter coming up. Um, we've already talked a bit about Arbor Day and the Tree Board and, and, uh, Ms. Armstrong outlined the changes with the, uh, with the leadership there, which is a, a good move and, and, uh, it'll be good to see, uh, some new people heading up the Tree Board. Uh, Gary has done a great job and, uh, he's, he's still on the Tree Board, he hasn't left it, he's just, uh, taking a step down from, from the chairmanship, but, uh, so graduation, congratulations to them. I do wanna re-emphasize, uh, Ms. Armstrong's, uh, Arbor Day presentation on the twenty-ninth. I do have that on my calendar, I will, I will attend that, so hope everybody else can as well. So congratulations to all the new officers, I'm sure they will continue to work of Tree Board that has, you know, been a great service to Bel Air. Uh, March twenty-third, I attended the CCUA board meeting as several other, our council members, uh, that was the last meeting for Sarah Miller as she is moving on to become an instructor. And Sarah was a great asset to CC, CCUA, so we are sorry to see her leave. Uh, Wilson Company made a presentation for possible enhancements to the wastewater system, uh, that was tabled for review for next meeting and we also reviewed and discussed preliminary draft of what may become a pretreatment program for CCUA customers. On April first, I attended the Bel Air Spring Festival as a couple of the council members have mentioned as well, uh, a great thank you to. have mentioned as well. Uh, great thank you to Bel Air Lions Club, Bel Air Chamber Commerce, Bel Air Rec Center, uh, staff as well as regular, uh, Bel Air staff, rest of Bel Air staff, I should say, not the regular staff. And, uh, that was, uh, lots of volunteers, a lot of volunteer work goes into that. So it was a great, it was a great thing. Um, so while it's, it's great that the intersection at 45th and Woodlawn is open, we need to continue to make special effort patronizing Los Compost and, uh, Dollar General. Those two businesses continue to be impacted by the Woodlawn construction. Remember, Woodlawn is only open one way, northbound on railroad tracks, so that still draws traffic to alternate routes. And of course, as we heard this evening, we're going to close the whole thing down there at the railroad for about three months. So that's, um, that's going to be still more impact. So from there, I'll now ask our city attorney if she has a report. Thank you. Mr. Lasher.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, April 29th is, will be a busy day. That's not only the Arbor Day event, but, uh, the, uh, shredding and e-recycling day will be, um, on April 29th from 9 to 1 here at City Hall. So people want to, um, recycle any electronic, um, appliances and things, they can do that. And then of course, we'll have a shredding truck here that, um, can shred documents. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention that, uh, Bel Air continues to grow. Uh, staff had, uh, the first quarter of 2022, staff had 255, uh, turn-ons or offs or, um, new customers and the first quarter of this year, 2023, they had 456. So, uh, a lot of, uh, growth continues in Bel Air. So, thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, that's a lot, that's a lot of growth from one year old to the next. Moving on to item 12, ordinance, ordinances, resolutions and final actions. So council contracted with PEC to develop plan for the city's current and future water and sewer needs based on projected growth. The plan was nearing completion early this year. However, in the Integra project has, was recently announced and Integra and its associated suppliers will require much greater water distribution, uh, and, and sewage, sewage treatment capacity then was projected. Uh, this addendum to the PEC agreement will allow them to consider the additional capacity required and start looking at options for service on both water and sanitary sewer sides. It will include preliminary discussions with potential suppliers, El Dorado, City Wichita, CCUA, and additional water rights likely would be needed for water usage and reviewing CCUA and City Wichita for potential sanitary sewer treatment options. This phase would be only for preliminary discussions and to decide which alternatives are the most feasible for proceeding with further evaluation. The costs associated with the addendum will be split between the water and sewer funds. Staff recommends council accept the amend, the amendment to the agreements for professional services from PEC in the amount of $48,500. So it is important, uh, planning function. If Integra is awarded the CHIPS funding, they will start construction almost immediately with a two-year completion date. Uh, we need to match that two-year completion date with infrastructure. Having this key study completed will allow us to hit the ground running when that CHIPS funding is approved. Any discussion concerning the amendment to the PEC agreement?
Mr. Mayor, we have, uh, Sarah with PEC is here and she can, uh, maybe, uh, explain a little bit to the citizens at home and answer any questions from council.
Great. I wasn't aware. But thank you.
No, no problem. Thank you. Um, uh, thank you for letting me, uh, come talk to you tonight, Mayor and Council, and thank you Ty for the introduction. So my name is Sarah Unruh. Um, I'm with PEC. I lead our water and wastewater team. So our focus is primarily water and wastewater treatment. Um, so as Ty mentioned, this is going to be a, um, amendment to the existing contract for the water and sewer master plans. I want to kind of explain why that is. Um, so the purpose of the water and sewer master plan, um, that's in progress, it's going to be completed in June, um, is the anticipated date right now. But that is to provide you with a detailed evaluation of what your existing, um, water distribution system and sewer collection capacities are. Where are your existing deficiencies, um, if there's any, to provide, you know, current service, but then what do we need to provide for future city growth, um, which is, we just talked about is, is happening rather quickly. So planning for that and as you mentioned, um, in the discussion there, the potential for Integra to be here as well. So the master plan itself looks at water storage. It looks at pumping, um, capacity, it looks at the distribution system and fire protection. And then on the sewer side of things, we're looking at sewer capacity and pumping. So, um, all of those things are going to be covered in the master plan, but knowing that improvements are going to be needed to address the population growth in Integra, we want to kind of keep moving on, on what that might look like. Um, so as you mentioned, you've covered a lot of my stuff, uh, and this upfront stuff, so I'm going to be a little repetitive just to make sure here. But, um, so the CHIPS funding, as you mentioned, is, the announcement is expected probably July and Aug, July, August kind of timeframe is what we're anticipating at this point. Um, and that two-year timeframe for them to be under operation. So it's really important that we figure out what's necessary on the other side of, of what the master plan is looking at, which is looking at where you're going to get that water from, how to get it into the city system. And then on the wastewater side, how we're going to get that somewhere and where that, what that treatment and disposal is going to look like. So essentially, that's what we're doing with this, um, proposed amendment. Um, and the next study is to look at the other side of things. So the master plan looks at kind of what's inside the city and this is going to look at the connections and, you know, outside of that, um, to deal with the water and the wastewater. Um, so staff is recommending, um, the extension of the current master plan contract. And part of the reason for that, to do this initial look at this study, is that a traditional RFP process takes about three to four months. We've been through that obviously before. Um, and with that timeframe that we're looking at, we need to go ahead and really get started on it quickly to make sure that you guys can, um, keep up with that really aggressive timeline, um, that Integra is looking at. So wanting to make sure that we kind of look at these options and get those estimated costs figured out, um, by the time that CHIPS funding announcement is made. So if that selection of the site is here in Bel Air, you're ready to roll, you know, right into the next steps of that. Um, we've already established really good relationships with, uh, entities that you mentioned, um, in, in the memo there with the City of Wichita, with, um, El Dorado, all these entities that we'll be looking at and kind of talking to. So we've got those relationships established to keep that moving, you know, very quickly. And we've also been involved very recently with a lot of contract negotiations and particularly with the City of Wichita for other, um, entities that utilize them. So knowing that whole process and we'll be able to move through that, um, pretty quickly when the time comes. So what we've got in front of you tonight is what we're calling Phase 1. The approach to figuring out everything that's necessary on the water, um, supply and the wastewater treatment side, um, we really need to do in a phased approach. Um, we don't exactly know what all the options are yet. We don't know what really is a viable option. And so we're not going to get too deep into things until we know what that looks like. So what's in front of you tonight for the amendment is what we're calling Phase 1. And this is just an assessment that takes a look at what are all the options out there, um, that we could possibly look at for additional water supply and wastewater treatment and disposal, um, and determine what the viable options are. So we may come up with a list of 10 different things, but only three of them are really good options and that's what we move forward with. Um, so this is not only for Integra. I think that's something important to, to note here. Um, I know that announcement's not final, but, um, this is important for city growth too. So this is not information that's just strictly looking at what's necessary for Integra. It's looking at what's necessary on the water supply and the wastewater treatment for all the city growth you're experiencing as well. So the things that we're going to do as part of this Phase 1 is we're going to take a look at those existing contracts that you have in place and see what all kind of the current terms, you know, and, and restrictions might be that we'll need to be considering as we move forward. Uh, we'll have the conversations with the new industrial users. It's really important for us to get an idea of exactly how much water they think they're going to need, how much their suppliers are going to need and what their wastewater stream is going to look like. Um, we know that's not going to be exact by any means quite yet, but having those initial conversations so we know what direction to head when we're looking at talking to, um, you know, other entities about how much water we're going to need. So having those initial conversations and then also having those same type of conversations with those potential suppliers that we mentioned, El Dorado, Wichita, CCUA, what can you provide to see what our options really are? Um, so that's going to be part of those, um, initial conversations. Um, specifically on the water side, we're going to be looking at, um, those potential water suppliers, including water rights. I know Burns &amp; McDonald has completed some work, um, with the study that they've been doing, looking at water rights. We'll be, um, working through with their information and coordinating with them on the efforts that they've done already. So we're not duplicating anything, um, that has already been done and definitely working in tandem with that. We're also going to look at water quality, um, to make sure that the water quality that you would be getting from these different sources, um, is matching and makes sense, um, for what your existing system is. And then on the wastewater side, we're going to look at those wastewater treatment options. That might be utilizing existing facilities. It might be construction of a new facility or utilizing existing connections, or maybe a combination of both. And so the purpose of this is to look at all those things and see what would work best, um, in the long run. And then last thing we're going to do as part of the wastewater is look at the discharge options. Um, as a new facility might be one of the options. We need to look at what the flood profile is. You know, KDHE requires that you have that discharge permit and you discharge to a water body. Well, we can't discharge too much. If we discharge, say, 10 million gallons a day, is that going to be okay, um, from a flood perspective? So we're going to do a little bit of analysis on that. Um, and then we're also going to do some regulatory and permitting, you know, research to determine what all, you know, would be required for that discharge point, just so we can get a good feel for what all the options are. Okay? So that's what we're going to do first. Um, our intent with this is we're doing this as a standard hourly because we just don't know exactly what we're going to get into yet. Uh, we may go into one meeting and get all the information we need, so we don't need two more. Um, so this is a standard hourly, um, contract to make sure that we're, you know, utilizing, um, just what we need, um, for that first phase. And then once we get done with that first phase, um, which is again, what's in front of you right now, um, our intent would be to move into the next phase, which we'll be, we'll be calling Phase 2. And the purpose of that is to take those viable options that we come up with out of plant or out of Phase 1 and put costs to those. And the, you know, knowing what those options are is important, but as you get into, you know, this announcement later this summer, knowing what those cost impacts are going to be is going to be really important too. So the next phase would be looking at that. And again, this is useful information for city growth, for Integra, and it's also for, you know, you get another potential industrial user or some other large user in town as well, that information translates, um, into, into those planning efforts as well. Um, so out of the Phase 2, then we'd be looking at what those exact necessary infrastructure improvements might be. And the water lines, the sewer lines, the treatment capacities, you know, any sort of things like that, that we're going to need, the capital cost estimates, but then also the annual operating cost estimate. Um, obviously, we want to know what it's going to cost to construct it, but to truly evaluate all those options, you want to look at more of like a 20-year kind of cost implications. So we look at those annual operating costs as well, permitting requirements. And then what would come out of that is basically, we're going to select one option for water and one option for sewer, um, and get to that point, um, intent is prior to, um, kind of that late summer timeframe. Then once all that's done, then we move into some next phases, um, where we would look at a siting study, you know, look at different sites, um, to determine what's a viable, what the best option is for different sites and then give conceptual layouts, what would that look like, um, on these different sites. And then the last piece of that, um, would be to prepare the preliminary engineering report that's required, um, for KDHE and any sort of the federal funding that we're looking at doing. So those two phases would not happen until after, you know, an announcement is official. Um, obviously, those are just to kind of let you know, you know, what the overall picture would look like, um, uh, you know, for the overall piece. So. Any questions I can answer? I know that was a lot of information, just like right at you, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
My main question is on the fee. I'm not sure I truly understand the fee structure. Uh, it, it says 48,500, but then you also mentioned that it's on an hourly basis. So is it an on, on an hourly basis up to 48,500, but we're for sure guaranteed our deliverable for that amount? But there's a good chance it'll be a lot less than that?
Uh, yes, that's the potential. So what we would do is that is the maximum. Um, so we will charge us on a standard hourly basis. Like I said, we don't know exactly how much effort this is going to take, you know, um, just because some of these things are still kind of up in the air. Uh, but that would be our maximum.
For Phase 1?
For Phase 1, correct.
And then we would see separate contracts potentially for the, the future phases, which may be able to pull from the pool that's already approved if there's any left or may not?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Lasher, I sent you an email about some concerns I had in the contract. Do you remember those issues?
Um, no, I didn't, I didn't address those with PEC, Mayor.
Okay.
But I did, I remember seeing that, but.
Okay.
I think we can, um, maybe discuss that with them. If, if you're still good with the contract, we, I don't think we have to have them do everything that's in there that your concern was. Yeah.
That's fine. All right, good. Thank you. There was some language in the contract I was concerned with, so, but.
Do we need to discuss that before we approve the contract?
Well, these, these, I understand the way this, this is laid out. It's kind of like, okay, we'll look at, see what we got to do and then go from there and decide what we need to do. And I think it will be fine that way. So.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions or concerns? If not, entertain a motion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the amendment to the engineering agreement with PEC for the water and sanitary sewer master plans in the amount of 48,500 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Just a comment, this, I couldn't remember Sarah, but I don't remember your last name.
Unruh.
I'm sorry?
Unruh.
Unruh. Ms. Unruh said it was not.
Or not to exceed. Okay.
It's a not to exceed amount. Correct.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay, then I will insert not to exceed in front of the 48,500.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All second.
That was motion by Ms. Hamburg and second by Mr. Dean. Any discussion? Very now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item is, item eight is, or 13, I'm sorry. Can't read my Roman numerals. Executive session. So we do need a 30-minute executive session and, uh, so I'd like to ask that we, call that. I do, yeah, okay. It is properly worded with right.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I will make a motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of attorney-client consultation regarding contractual obligations pursuant to the KSA 754319 exception for attorney-client privilege. We will invite the city manager, the interim city attorney, Brian Meyer and Ken Lee. The meeting will be for a period of 30 minutes and the open meeting will resume in council chambers at 8:32 PM.
All second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Welch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We're in executive session, 30 minutes. We're in executive session, 30 minutes.
Executive session, no binding action was taken and I'll entertain a motion for an extension of the executive session.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I will make a motion to extend the executive session for an additional 15 minutes with the open meeting resuming at 8:48 PM.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Ms. Hamburg. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. We're back in executive session for 15 minutes.
Okay, we held executive session, no binding action was taken and entertain another motion to extend.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I'll motion to go into executive session for the sole purpose of discussing the subject of a
You can just say it.
I don't have to read the whole thing.
You can say it, just say it.
I just want to extend for executive session for 15 more minutes and we would re-adjourn, resume in city council chambers at nine ten.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dean, second by Mr. Smith, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries five to zero, back in executive session. Hold same sign, motion carries five to zero, back in executive session. So I'm gonna call the meeting back to order, we held an executive session, no binding action was taken. Move on to item fourteen on the agenda, monthly workshop, so, uh, that's normally scheduled for next April eleventh, uh, Tuesday at six thirty P M., but we don't have anything pending for a workshop, so if council wants to take a month off, we could cancel, or we may have items to discuss, if you want, put some things out there for an agenda.
Do you have any unfinished things we need to discuss, Justin? I, I thought you might have something from the past.
Um, I actually have a conflict that night and wouldn't be able to attend.
Okay, fine, I'm, I'm good with not meeting, I can't really think of anything urgent, I just
I can go to my other meeting, I got a meeting in Hutchinson that night, but, okay, so if everybody's okay, we'll just, we'll just, uh, cancel that meeting for next, next
Do we need to do anything formal to cancel that?
It's, it's not a formal meeting, it's an informal meeting, so I don't think we need to take any formal action.
We've never had before, right?
It's on the calendar and other stuff, though, right, I don't
It's just a workshop, so, um, the consensus is to not hold it tonight, so
Yeah, so we, we just don't do it. Okay, we're announcing, we're not having a workshop on April the eleventh, okay? All right, next item to just discussion of future issues is July fourth, this year is on a Tuesday, it is the first Tuesday of July, which makes a city council meeting that night, who wants to be here?
I don't know, it might be quieter here than at my house.
After nine days, I, I don't know if we may let it hang out.
So
No matter what we're talking about.
We could move it to Monday, or we can move it to Wednesday or Thursday, and my vote is to go to Wednesday the fifth or Thursday the sixth, but, uh, listen what your preferences are.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Speaker.
One alternative that I was thinking about was, uh, maybe potentially just shifting the calendar a week in July and holding the first meeting on the eleventh, the workshop on the eighteenth, and the second meeting on the twenty-fifth is an option. Just a thought.
It's an idea, but it kind of depends on what's going on then, that's several months in the future.
Yeah, I, I might have some conflicts if we did that shift like that, but let me look and see. Sometimes I know this stuff, sometimes I don't. Eleventh is clear.
It's tough with summer vacations, I'm guessing that sometime in there I'll be gone, but I don't know which week.
Yeah.
Well, what I, what I was thinking is, it's very probable that there could be vacations that week of, of July fourth, and that may be a challenging week to meet in general.
I'm gonna be in North Carolina that last week of July, so, so, I, I know that's not gonna work for me.
Perhaps, maybe we would want to wait till closer to time, to better know what's on calendars.
Yeah.
We, we could also decide to do the first meeting the eleventh, and then, uh, instead of a workshop
Decide what to do about the other one, yeah.
Set the workshop that month, and then we could add it if we needed it for another day.
We can't put it off too long, it is only like ninety days in the future, so
Yeah, so I think we do have to take formal action on that at the next meeting, is that correct? Yeah, okay, so we, do we want to just, next, next meeting, move the, that meeting to the eleventh of July?
Can we wait until after the next meeting to move it, or is there a certain number of days deadline we have to?
No, you could probably wait till May, if you would. Yeah.
Okay, so that wasn't quite what I got from the mayor's statement.
We could
Sounded like we had to approve it next week.
No, I was just suggesting that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, to give the wrong impression there. Uh, that was, if we wanted to do that, we could put it on next, next agenda to approve it. If we want to wait to approve it, we can wait on a later agenda to approve it, okay? Either way.
I'm just leaving on the future issues every month until we figure out what to do.
Okay. We won't solve it tonight, right, okay.
Ty, do you, I guess a question while we're discussing it, do you have a preference, if we moved it to the eleventh and had a regular meeting also on the eighteenth, does that make, does that even make sense to have two meetings within two weeks? Is it gonna give you enough time to even have us do stuff on the eighteen?
So probably we'll have workshops, so, yeah.
Is that gonna be a long enough workshop, we want to do it on a Saturday?
Mike. Oops, thank you.
No, I think, uh, we're gonna try to split it up over like May, June, July, August, so we should be okay on a couple hours. I'm just thinking that we wouldn't want to do, I mean, we could do like Justin says, just move, shift everything, but we wouldn't want to have a meeting and a workshop on the same night.
How about on the same week?
On the same week? Yeah, you could do it on the same week. If you wanted to have two meetings in the same week.
Throwing out that possibility. But again, if people are going on vacation, we're
Yeah.
Yep.
July is usually a tough week or tough time for vacations.
Do that, okay. All right, well, I think we'll
We'll think it over.
Put, keep it on the
Keep it on the future issues.
The future issues, and we'll look at it again, okay? Our next item is fifteen, a non-discussion motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
A second. Motion by Mr. Welsh, a second by Mr. David.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
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 Hold same sign, two bad, or adjourn.